Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 16th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 6:00 PM, the posted time for the meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and Intimification, which will be led tonight by Commissioner Weston.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us and the responsibility to come here tonight to do the county's business. We pray that you will give us wisdom to make all the decisions that need to be made here tonight. We pray that you will touch our sheriffs, our EMS, our fire, the rescue, and all the people that are out there keeping us safe as we enjoy being at this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Next item is recognition of any elected officials that we have tonight.
Allen, Sheriff's Office.
Janet Gerald, Mayor of Kingstown.
Sharon Martin, Mayor of Prokian, Kingstown.
Robert Ram.
Sure.
Karen.
Randy Graham.
Kingstown President.
Thank you all. Next item is recognition of any veterans that we have present.
John.
John, five.
Robin Morton, US Army.
Jason Pauls, United States Air Force.
Robert Perry, United States Navy.
Governor Bruceville, United States Marine Corps.
Robert Ram, Saudi Arabia State Law.
Got one right behind you.
Earl, United States Army.
John, you have to use that song. United States Army. Look, we've got the veteran pen that's got the county seal with a veteran rocker. If any of you don't have one, if you don't have one, come up front. On one, two. Do you have one? Okay, got two of them. Next item is recognition of any law enforcement that's present.
Danny House, Department of Sheriff's Office.
Governor Bruceville, Department of Sheriff's Office.
Allen, Department of Sheriff's Office.
And the last item is any recognition of any county department heads.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Advisor of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and Owens, County Director of the U.N. Education.
Louie Jackson, Department of Defense.
Tiffany Anthony, Department of Department.
Jason Pauls, Business Development Director.
Scott Moe, Department of Marketing.
First item on the agenda tonight is motion to adopt a proposed agenda. Before you commission this is the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
My comment, we've both intended to have written.
Second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all the fair will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Next item on the agenda is special recognition. The item tonight is the North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Award. I'll recognize the board clerk.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm Phyllis Nolan. I'm the clerk to the board, and I'm also the coordinator for Cleveland County's Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. The Governor's Volunteer Service Awards Program was created by the Office of the Governor in 1979 to recognize North Carolina's most dedicated volunteers. Through the years, that award has been bestowed on thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern, compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their local communities. The Governor's Volunteer Service Award honors the true spirit of volunteerism by recognizing individuals and groups that make a significant contribution to their community through their volunteer service. Any person, group, or entity from the public, nonprofit, and private sector may be nominated for an award. County award coordinators submit their top 10 volunteer nominations per county as we reach out to you all and ask for resources about all the great people we have that volunteer in our community. After those are gone through, they are sent to the governor's office, and that commission sends us back those who won. This year, we're excited to say we have four. Last year, we had three. This year, we have four, so we're very excited for that. And the best people to talk about these groups are the ones that nominated them. So the first person I'm going to call up is Leslie Gibbon from Cornerstone Dental.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Gibbon. I'm the owner of Chatterbox Creative. We're a full-service marketing agency here based in Cleveland County. I'm pleased to present the Governor's Service Award to my client, Cornerstone Dental Associates. Over the past 11 years that I've been handling their marketing, they have never wavered from their commitment to providing the best dental care for their patients, supporting and serving their community, and being environmentally friendly. The partners, Dr. Kendall and Luke Craver, Dr. Sarah Carner, and Dr. Massey Williams, acknowledged the valuable and important contributions of volunteering and giving to the social, cultural, economic, and environmental well-being of Cleveland County and beyond. Their efforts inspire and promote the spirit of volunteerism and giving through their exemplary endeavors. Between them, they serve on eight boards for nonprofit organizations, covering everything from arts and education to health and women's, from dentistry and women's health. The doctors and their team at Cornerstone Dental Associates are involved and/or host most numerous volunteer and charitable events throughout the year, like the dental bus, where they volunteer their time and services to provide compassionate dental care to people in need in our community. Their annual canine and canines event partners with animal rescue organizations and local businesses. They sponsor the Friends of the Park Toy Drive, and have recently added Cornerstone Cares Cafe in their office, highlighting a local nonprofit each quarter and collecting donations for that nonprofit. They also, other events include Back to School Bash to help provide students in the community with school supplies and food, health fairs and educational presentations at area daycares and schools, scholarship funds, Earth Day activities, Legion World Series sponsors, high school athletic scholarships and sponsorships, and their signature 80/20 event, which promotes oral health for senior adults. I could go on and on. Cornerstone Dental Associate doctors and staff honor the true spirit of volunteerism and continue to contribute significantly to their community through volunteer service. It is an honor to work with them, and even greater honor to present Dr. Sarah Carner and Dr. Lauren Massey-Williams and Annette Cherry from Cornerstone Dental Associates with the Governor's Volunteer Service Award this evening. Dr. Kendall and Luke Craver is not be able to be here. She's at her son's concert at school.
So if you can have them, if you three can come up, commissioners, if we want to take pictures.
You want us down there?
We want to stay up here.
Yeah, let's go down here.
Let's use back here. That way we can use your phone.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce Chinme Shende for his great community work during the COVID time. He volunteered to help during the COVID time when people was having, they was losing a job and having a lot of issues. I would like Chinme to talk about his work in very short, what he did during the COVID time. He is in college and like, you know, the, what he did during the COVID time is really the great example, which was like for our community in Cleveland County. So whenever, if you guys permit, Chinme would like to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Chinme Shende, and I feel truly humbled to receive the Honorable Governor's Award in our Cleveland County. This evening is filled with so much warmth and positivity, and I am grateful for the opportunity to address you all. First and foremost, I would like to thank my parents and my grandparents for instilling in me such strong values of giving back to the community. Let me share a personal story that highlights the importance of giving back. When I was a child, my parents gave me three piggy banks. They taught me the significance of dividing my money into three different parts. Let me explain. The first piggy bank was for personal expenses. The second piggy bank was for future savings. And the third piggy bank, most importantly, was for giving back to the community. So from such a young age, my parents had instilled that value of always giving back to your community, no matter what. The outbreak of COVID-19 took everyone by surprise and shock, and even my parents' business faced many challenges and struggled to survive. However, during those difficult times, I saw my father's concern for people losing their jobs, and I felt moved and motivated to take action. That summer, I organized an initiative called Small Hands, Big Impact, in which every weekend, my friends and I would distribute things like groceries and basic necessities to people that needed them. Seeing the smiles on the faces of the people motivated us to keep the initiative going for three months, helping over hundreds of people during those times. As the upcoming young generation going into the real world, it is our duty to give back and take care of the communities that raised us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Gerald, Mayor of Kingstown.
Good evening. To our county commissioners and staff, to other elected officials in here, to our great citizens of Kingstown, our friends and all others who fill this chamber, it is indeed my privilege and pleasure to be able to present, for the second year in a row, the Governor's Service Award to a Kingstown organization. This year's organization, this year's award goes to Paul and Marion Ramsour Foundation, which was founded in 2020, just a couple of years ago, in memory of the late Paul and Marion Ramsour Sr., who were dedicated citizens to serving Kingstown and the surrounding communities and improving the lives of Kingstown's residents. P&amp;M is located in the center of Kingstown and provides much-needed services to our community's African-American youth, seniors, and other vulnerable populations. To improve our community's economic power and well-being, P&amp;M provides local gardeners, farmers, and entrepreneurs an avenue to sell their produce and products through the weekly farmer's market, which is open from June through October during the summer month. Also, they offer a youth program that provides opportunities for the youth to learn entrepreneurship skills. Y'all say that three times in a row. Garden, a food pantry, and also setting up a youth market for community-wide food security. With an unpaid staff, zero-paid staff of three, and numerous community volunteers, they serve over 600 community members, which includes our seniors, vulnerable populations, and youth. Not only that, P&amp;M are ever searching to reach out to form collaborations, collaborative partnerships with others in the county, in the towns, to help in their venture. They formed a partnership with Aldersgate United Methodist Church, the YMCA, the Arts Council, and all of this in volunteer efforts to serve our community, to serve our county community. And it is indeed my pleasure, my privilege, and my honor to present the Paul and Marion Ramsour Foundation with this year's Governor's Volunteer Service Award. And if Paul and Marion will come up, and our Aldersgate fellows.
All the volunteers.
All the volunteers?
Yes.
This is Janet Davis, who is president of the organization.
She don't have to do it.
This is Kingstown Councilmember and Bishop Sharon Martin, whose organization, KCOCC, won the award last year.
All right, that's good. All right, three, two, one. All right, three, two, one. One more, three, two, one.
And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to call President McClurey from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority.
Our sponsor Larry Corey could not be with us this evening, so I will share some of the service projects and activities that have been implemented in Cleveland County. Good evening. I am Tropsy McClooney, President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Omega Sigma Omega Chapter, serving Cleveland and Rutherford Counties. We are the oldest letter organization founded by African-American women on the campus of Howard University in 1908. With the theme soaring to greater heights of service and sisterhood, the 2022 through 2026 administration seeks to build upon Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority's rich legacy of service by galvanizing our sisterhood of more than 120,000 active members to lead from the front lines of change, education, and advocacy. Our administration has six initiatives that will be implemented throughout Cleveland and Rutherford Counties with an impact that stretches far beyond our city, our region, and our state. We empower families. Our sorority has engaged in providing book nooks to elementary school students so their lives can be enriched by the beauty of reading and levels of competency can increase. We also have an after-hours hunger program being implemented to address the hunger needs of elementary children. Our PALS, PALS Reading Program, remains present in one of our elementary schools as well. In the coming months, our Youth Leadership Initiative will serve youth in various areas of interest. AKYLI is a youth-led and highly-interactive leadership development program designed to empower and engage youth 11 through 13, ages 11 through 13. We volunteer to feed law enforcement and recently started a partnership with Mental Health of Cleveland County to impact the needs of those receiving these services. We build our economic wealth. We encourage and equip our members and others to place key strategies into action to build personal, organizational, and community wealth while spending their dollars to help small businesses thrive in our community. One specific area of focus is and will continue to be supporting women entrepreneurs. We enhance our environment. Yes, we plant trees. With our sorority's largest tree planting effort to date, the environmental impact will be measured and tracked across the nation. Recently, in partnership with the Cleveland County Extension, the master gardeners assisted us in tribute to our late sorority sister and longtime employee of the library, Linda Hextall Hooker. We advocate for social justice. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority has always been at the forefront of social justice to promote fairness and equity. We stand in the gap to empower our communities and act in the best interests of all people through social advocacy and justice. We do this by volunteering time to equip communities with tools, knowledge, and support to activate their voices and mobilize residents and empower communities to help themselves. And we uplift our community. We service blessing boxes. We service blessing boxes, enabling communities by collecting and filling these boxes with canned goods and non-perishable items as supplies decrease. The impact is in knowing that we are helping to provide meals for families across our service areas. The numerous volunteer hours spent addressing each of these initiatives are rendered to improve the lives of those we serve. We are on the move, working collaboratively to maximize our outreach on progressive endeavors and consistently produce leaders who will advance our credo of service. We are strong and intentional in our service of sisterhood as we work to make a difference in Cleveland and Rutherford Counties. Our services have garnered numerous regional awards, and tonight, we are honored that you have selected us as one of this year's Governor's Volunteer Service recipients. Thank you. Yes, I do have with the... Some officers and members of our sorority, if you would stand and come forward.
Here is the volunteer pen. If you don't have enough, just let me know when I can get more for your organization, everybody. Okay? There's no hiding. All right, three, two, one. Just one more. All right, three, two, one. One more, three, two, one. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
How you been?
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for all the work that you do and your volunteer service, and I'm sure these are no question deserving recipients here, and I'm sure there was others that were submitted as well. So thank you to all that you do. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize our interim manager, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the consent agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from the May 1st, 2023 special call meeting and the May 2nd, 2023 regular commissioners meeting. Item B is amended minutes from the April 18th, 2023 regular commissioners meeting. Item C is the Finance Department Budget Transfer Summary. This is as required by North Carolina general statutes, representing to the Board for approval all internal transfers from April 24th through May 5th. The Tax Administration Collection Report is also on the consent agenda as item D. This includes real estate taxes, vehicle taxes collected, showing 97.67% collection, which is slightly lower than this time last year, which was 98.13%. Item E is Tax Administration Abatements and Supplements. April 2023 monthly abatements total $7,798.98, and the supplements total $22,854.18. The Health Department has a budget amendment, an allocation in the amount of $91,514. This was awarded in opioid abatement funding through Partners Behavioral Health. These funds will be utilized to purchase Narcan and Fentanyl test trips and to support marketing and outreach to the community. The Sheriff's Office has a budget amendment totaling $68,235 in funds to cover the cost and shipping of new stall badges and patches for officer uniforms. The Finance Department has a budget amendment on the consent agenda, item H. This is a budget allocation for $1,177,207 in capital project funds for the new emergency 911 call center. Last item on consent is a cooperative extension budget amendment for $640 in funds that will be used to offset expenses for a nutrition class that is being offered. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ministers, you've been presenting the consent agenda. Commissioners, you've been presented the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any other discussion or questions? Here none, all, and fair, willing to say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Now we're on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is the Justice Center Phase 1 Site Work. Carrie?
Good evening, Board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Just to bring you up to speed, we come before you tonight to discuss Justice Center and our next early site bid package that we'll be bringing before you. I'm here to answer any questions. We also have a representative from our C Mar, Rusty Setzer, here with us too, in case you have any questions from him also. So I'll start with just reminding the Board about the procurement for our Justice Center. We did choose the C Mar Construction Manager at-Risk Procurement Model. A lot of that decision was made due to the current market conditions, the ability to do some of the work ahead of time, the ability to be able to order materials ahead of time. But just as a reminder, this was presented to you when we presented the C Mar for approval. The responsibilities of the C Mar, evaluating the project, obviously advising and consulting on materials, preparing a schedule, bidding out the work to the contractors, coming up with estimates, and then obviously the inspection and quality review. And now on the county side, we're responsible for providing the information they need, obviously financial obligations, establishing the budget, retaining the architect, and then obviously paying the bills to the contractors that we hire. So I wanted to talk about early site work. This is, like I said, the next package that we're bringing before you. The first one obviously was demolition. If you have looked across the street, you'll have seen this week they actually demobilized, if that's a word, from the property, and that part of the project has been completed. This next part is, like I said, called the early site package and the utility relocation. So as part of this section of the project, you'll see some grading being done, some mass grading being done really, you'll see some temporary roads put in, you'll see water lines and sewer lines and electrical service and all of that being rerouted. So the bid was prepared by our architects and our construction manager. And then we went through what we call, what the C Mar calls, and what we obviously approved as a pre-qualification process. This is really our ability to kind of pre-qualify on the front end to make sure that we're getting bidders that can actually do the work for us. We advertised for pre-qualification in the Shelby Star, Kings Mountain Herald, two construction, really, two construction industry best practice sites called I Square Foot and Building Connected. And then we actually held two community meetings to try to gain interest in this early package. Pre-qualification forms were due to the county on January 9th of this year. And just so you know, some of the things that were included in those forms were license info, work history, safety ratings, current workload, and then any claims that might have been filed against the company. For this pre-qualification process, we had 10 companies who submitted pre-qualification materials, and only six of those were approved. The ones that were disproved were based on safety ratings and the inability to get required performance bonds. So a lot of due diligence was done. Both of those, the I Square Foot and the Building Connected, connects to hundreds of contractors throughout really the United States. So the bidding process, once we pre-qualified the bidders, we invited them obviously to bid on the project. And then Yates Metcon reached out to the qualified bidders to encourage them to bid, to answer questions, to give them all the information that they needed. The project was set to bid on April 12th. All of the bid requirements follow North Carolina General Statutes. So when we came to the bid opening on April 12th, we had three bidders that were confirmed to be there until that day, one of them backed out. So at that first bid opening, we actually received only two bids. By North Carolina General Statute, we cannot open bids with just two bids on a first bid date. So the project was actually extended for one week. On April 18th, we received, we came back, and those two bids were still the only two bids that we received, and they were opened at that time. So the construction project estimate for this project, this part of the project, excuse me, not the overall project, just the construction portion was $3,956,746. We received two bids, one from Morgan Contracting and one from Site Work LLC. Obviously, when we opened the bids, they did not line up with our construction estimate. So what we did was work with our C Mar and our architect team to really value engineer the budget to get to a place where we felt comfortable that the bid lined up with the budget. So we had a base cost of work, cost of work of 3.78 million, and then there's unit price work included in that also. The unit price work, as you can see, they are listed. If, we've done a lot of testing on the site, we honestly don't expect a lot of that unit price work to be needed, but we have to include some of it in a project. Anyone who's ever worked with a construction project knows sometimes there are unknowns. So we did leave some money in there for unsuitable soils or rock. But with the testing that has been completed to date, we're not expecting a whole lot of that. So should none of that be needed or only some of that be needed, that will lower the cost of the project. So where we landed, like I said, the budget was $3,956,746. And our bid for the construction portion came to be $3,956,595.75. So that we are, at this point, $150 under budget. The change order that's actually in your packet tonight actually includes more than just the construction, because as you know, with a C Mar project, there's lots of other things that are included in the project because it is based on the C Mar contract that was approved. So we come before you tonight asking for a change order of $5,192,495 for this Phase 2 site package. All of these additional items were included in the cost estimate we received from the contractor. So at this point, we are still estimated under budget of $105.25. So I come before you tonight asking for approval of the change order with Yates Metcon in the amount of $5,192,495 for the early release site work and utility relocation package. I can answer any questions, or I have my representative from the C Mar who can answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Rusty, you can come up if you need to. Or do you have any questions for Carrie, Todd, or Rusty?
I guess the only question I would have, and I'm sure you're going to say you agree with what I'm saying, is you feel real comfortable that the numbers are probably as tight as we're going to get at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because you work with this every day.
We're in a very competitive market right now. One of the things that we do, and the reason we're able to work this back down, is when we go out to the marketplace for these site packages especially, we overload a bit on the quantities one of these contractors carry in their bid for unit prices, and they give us additive and deductive unit price. And we found that if you put the right amount in there, then you have an honest unit price. Otherwise, you play that hoping that they hit rock, hit unsuitable soils, and they get a change order for it. So we try to guard against that and get an honest unit price, and that is reflected very much so in this bid.
Thank you, Rusty.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions or comments, then the motion before you is to approve the change order or to deny.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
I'll say.
So we have a motion to approve Change Order Number 2 at the 5.2 million dollars, or 5,192,495. This is the early release site work and utility relocation package. Any other questions or discussions? Here none, all, and fair, willing to say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Carrie, Rusty. Next item on the agenda is the County Manager's Recommended Budget. At this time, I'll recognize our internal manager, Todd Carpenter. Again, he's going to come forward and present the fiscal year ending '24 recommended budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I do stand before you tonight to present to you the fiscal year '24 recommended budget. Commissioner's Strategic Plan in mind. In this plan, there's five focus areas: Citizen Engagement, Economic Development, Public Safety, Fiscal Sustainability, and Community Wellness. We'll touch on each one of these as we go through my presentation. The top priorities for this budget in fiscal year '24 will be to continue to plan and budget for and implement our capital improvement plan, which consists right now of four buildings, one being the Justice Center Campus, 911 Communications Center, Emergency Operations Center, and Board of Elections. We will continue to recruit shooting competitions to our foothills, shooting complex. We will continue to partner with Cleveland County Schools for long-term school capital planning. We will maintain support for our county Public Safety Department as we work through and implement the Public Safety Strategic Plan. We will focus on our community wellness and strive hard to improve our county's health rankings. And we will focus on being an employer of choice through competitive pay, modern policy, and career progressions for our employees. This budget was based on the foundation of zero-based budgeting. We fostered a cross-departmental cost-saving culture, and I'm pleased to say that within Cleveland County, there is a culture of, within all the departments, of the organization being put first, not the departments, not the individuals. And I was so happy to see that as we worked through this budget and everybody realizing that no department is any more important than another and no individual is more important. So the process begins early in the year when we ask our departments to commit and submit budget requests to us. Once we get those requests, we work through those, compile those, and then we start having department-level meetings with each department, and we go through, or we did go through this year, line item by line item, each budget. Department heads were asked to justify the request, and we prioritize those and evaluated those with respect to the strategic plan. And I believe have provided you with the most fair and fiscally responsible budget possible. As we work through our budget, we have to keep in mind economic indicators, both on the national level and the local level. So we're looking at inflation rates, we're looking at construction costs, we're trying to estimate where we're going to be a year from now. Are we facing a recession? These kind of things have to be kept in mind as we're working through our budget. Same on the local side with local key economic indicators. All positive for Cleveland County right now. Population growth, home permitting, land use revenues, our sales are strong. So all of this goes into the building of the budget and estimating our revenues and expenses. This year, the budget is built with, of course, no tax rate increase. It will remain 54.75%. That is the recommendation, and that brings the value of a penny to just over $1 million. A few highlights that I wanted to mention before getting too deep into this presentation. I just mentioned that the general fund tax rate will remain the same as will the Cleveland County Schools recommended rate of 14 cents. We will add in this budget an additional $1.5 million for future debt service allocation for our Justice Center Campus. This brings the total to 6.9 million, and it will remain that way for the next 20 years. We will continue our systematic approach to employee pay. In this budget, we have funds for a cost of living adjustment, a performance-based bonus program, and 401K. Animal Services is receiving significant dollars in this budget to outfit their facility, their kennels, truck boxes, fencing that are desperately needed in that area. The Grand Center has an audio/video refresh included in this budget. Included in this budget is a mandate from the state that we continue to fund and actually increase another time the percentage that employers are required to pay for our employees' retirement. So that's built into this budget. We have operating capital increases that I'll talk about in just a little while in this budget. We have a dental coverage enhancement that I will talk about. We're adding, recommending added seven additional full-time employees to this budget. Five of those positions will go to the Sheriff's Department, one to the shooting range, and one will be a mechanic assigned to solid waste. There's also a 3% increase in our solid waste tipping fee that, again, will be discussed a little bit more in a few minutes. If you look at our total general fund budget trend, you can see that we are trending a little high this year. The reason for that is because of the acquisition of our rescue squads. So we took on 30 additional positions, and all the equipment related to that, when we acquired the rescue squads, and they are being fully funded in this year's budget. Along with the expenses in acquiring rescue squads, there's also revenue that will offset. But that's the reason for the trend line being just a little bit higher than in the years past. So Citizen Engagement, this is our, this is focus area one, and we have goals associated with this strategic focus area, which in this budget, we have strategic investments that will support broadband expansion, municipal development and community placemaking, community beautification, and leader cleanup programs and enhancements to our marketing and communications department and initiatives. Economic Development is focus area two. This is where we're promoting tourism, new industries, supporting business. As I mentioned before, we'll continue to recruit and host competitions in our shooting complex. We'll continue support of our agricultural-based economic development, continue to recruit industry and business, hopefully expand our shell program, building program, and continue with land acquisitions when they are responsible. And we will absolutely sustain our partnership with Cleveland County Fair Association. Public Safety is focus area three in the strategic plan, and we certainly want to ensure the safety of our citizens. We will begin the implementation of our Public Safety Strategic Plan in the coming year. I mentioned the central administrative EMS system. We are going to continue to design and plan and start construction of our Public Safety Campus. We are going to continue to design and plan and start construction of our public safety campus. And we maintain support for our county volunteer fire departments. The next slide here shows that each of our public safety agencies and departments are receiving increases in their budget. Now, most of this is associated with people or capital. What stands out on this slide, of course, is emergency medical services at thirty percent, and again, that is for the rescue squads. We compare extremely well against our peers when you look at our public safety annual spend total and our public safety annual spend per capita. So this is something we can be proud of. We're supporting our public safety agencies, again, to ensure the safety of our citizens. The volunteer fire service is funded by eight point seven cent supplemental tax rate. And the total budget this year for the ten fire departments within our district is five point five million dollars. This maintains an hourly wage of fifteen dollars per hour. It provides seventy-three hundred hours of man coverage per year, and it increases their operational allotment by just over eleven percent. Fiscal sustainability is focus area four. This is where we provide our services in the most fiscally responsible manner we can. We choose here to be an employer of choice. We always have, and we'll continue to leverage state and federal grant opportunities. We will be executing our capital plan, and we will be maintaining our fund balance of at or greater than twenty percent within this budget. This slide here depicts for you the fact that with the addition of the seven full-time employees, our employee count will go to seven hundred and ninety-two. We are investing into our employees, our, of course, most valued resource. We are recommending a five percent cost of living adjustment in this budget, and we are recommending to once again include in this budget the performance management bonus. The performance management bonus, as you recall, is based on six metrics that we measure twice a year: once in September and once in March. An employee, if we meet all of these metrics, has the opportunity to receive up to a three percent bonus in their check, and it would be paid once in September, again, and once in March. One point five percent would be the max each time. The dental plan improvement, I believe, in fiscal year twenty-five, you'll find staff to probably recommend moving toward a managed dental plan. We did not have time to implement that this year. But what we have done is include in this budget a change to our tier plan, our current tier plan and tier schedule, that will cover in full the two preventive visits that you would make to the dentist each year. And by, in doing so, so we're covering the first five hundred dollars at one hundred percent. So I think this is a great improvement to the plan that is in place. And again, hopefully, next year, we can even make more improvements in our dental plan. Cleveland County has a strong and well-performing employee health plan. You cover eight hundred and twenty-six lives. It's just around a ten point eight million dollars self-funded plan. You are self-insured. Those dollars include our third-party administrator, Blue Cross Blue Shield. It includes our health claims, our HSA contributions, wellness center, biometric standings that we do each year. And again, it's a very strong, it performs very strongly. Right here, you can see from 2020 to 2024, that's about a seven percent increase. It's something the county should be very proud of. Industry standard increases right now, and not only right now, but even in the past three, four years, have been anywhere between eleven and fifteen percent. So I'm really proud of this. When I came here and saw this strong performing health plan, I was very proud to be a part of it and see the work that is being performed here in Cleveland County toward wellness for our employees. As I mentioned earlier, staff is consistently and constantly seeking out grant opportunities. What I wanted to do here was just put a couple of slides up that illustrate the dollar amounts of the grants that we've received. They're substantial. On this page here, you can see the amount at the bottom, a little over eleven million dollars. Additional grant funds for other projects total, again, a substantial number. So we will always continue to work and seek out grants when appropriate. Capital budget summary, I mentioned earlier that our operating capital is increasing. And I'm proud to be able to say that we're able to do that this year. We have, and it's going to allow us to do, our staff to do a little more than they have in the past. Most of that is for, well, all of that is for equipment, such as radios, vehicles, voting booths, kennels, as I mentioned, for animal services. Capital reserve is where we fund our major capital projects. Illustrated a couple on the next page for you to take a look at. This, an example would be, like I said, the light, the AV upgrade at La Grande. The nine-one-one and emergency operations center funding is in here. The Justice Center Campus funding is in here. So again, major capital projects budgeted in our capital reserve fund. The Commissioners have established a policy of at least a twenty percent fund balance compared to our general fund expenditures. And we expect that to be maintained at the end of this fiscal year, in June of this year, and also at the end of the FY twenty-four year. We should, we should continue to maintain and be above the twenty percent fund balance policy limit. Community wellness is focus area five in our strategic plan. Here, we are promoting physical activity, healthy lifestyles. Improvement of our community health rankings is a priority, I know, for all of us here in the county, and we will work hard toward that endeavor in the upcoming year. We will continue to receive opioid settlement funds and use those in the most effective possible way and continue our expansion, the expansion of our existing trail system. It's worth mentioning that our Health Department and Social Services total budget is right at thirty-three million dollars. We appropriate ten million, ten and a half million dollars toward that funding. The difference, of course, is being made up from monies from state and federal agencies. But again, significant dollars in the health and social services area that will be put toward improving the health of our community and our citizens. Public education funding. This year, it is recommending that, recommended that nine hundred thousand dollars in additional funding be sent to Cleveland County Schools. That will bring their total amount for this year up to, right at thirty-two point four million dollars. With that recommended amount, we are meeting the Commissioners' goals of dedicated funding for educational capital, teacher supplements, and financial equity. Cleveland Community College, since 2019, that funding has increased by a million dollars. This year, it will, we are, we are increasing the amount that we give to the community college by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, bringing that total amount to three point three million dollars allocated in this year's budget. We also support many agencies, and we will continue to do so in this budget, outside agencies, and we continue to do so in this budget. We partner with agencies across our county, and this year, we have allotted, right at one point two million dollars, to go in support of these agencies. A lot of good partnerships exist between the county and these agencies. Some of these agencies, which are listed, a lot of others are not. Solid Waste Department, our one enterprise fund. We are recommending the continuation of a dollar for a fee that we collect for municipal waste, and that go toward the continuation of our litter prevention and cleanup fee program. As I mentioned, we are recommending increases, a three percent increase in our tipping fee, and that will go to support the continuation of life of site permitting and long-term solid waste handling. Just a couple of items of note in solid waste. The department, they are serving as a garage for some of our maintenance work on our vehicles for other departments. We are providing it with a, recommending that they get another mechanic position this year. They are getting a roll-off truck for the convenience sites, an air curtain burner, which allows us to incinerate yard waste as opposed to having to bring in outside companies to mowch that for us and grind that for us. Payback should be in approximately two years. There's some shop enhancements. They're going to try to pave the road from Airport Road down to the mechanic shop also. So just a few items of note there. With that, I will say to you that in accordance with the General Statutes of North Carolina, I'd submit to you for your consideration the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four recommended budget for Cleveland County. This budget maintains a property tax rate of fifty-four point seven five cents for a hundred dollars evaluation, along with a fourteen cent public school tax rate and an eight point seven five cent fire tax rate. The proposed budget is balanced and prepared under the guidelines of North Carolina General Statute, Chapter one fifty-nine, Article three, the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The budget incorporates the county's current strategic plan and ensures focus on five main areas: citizen engagement, economic development, public safety, fiscal sustainability, and community wellness. The budget exists to accomplish the goals and policy established by the Board and facilitates long-term strategic planning. The theme of this budget is outstanding service delivery. The focus of this budget was to accurately and conservatively forecast budget, budgeted revenues and expenditures while maintaining outstanding service delivery to the citizens of Cleveland County. Strategic investments toward the funding of our capital projects, education, public safety, health, and quality of life are all included in this budget. The budget includes seven new positions and a five percent cost of living adjustment for our most valued asset, the employees of our organization. Each of these strategic investments contributes to the quality of life enjoyed by our citizens. Today, we are expansion growth in our population, property tax, sales tax, jobs, housing, and industry. We're being diligent in our efforts to bring new business into our community and to encourage new investment and support our well-established businesses. It is the Board of Commissioners' vision to deliver outstanding service to our citizens, hence the theme of this budget. We're using data-driven approach and ambitious policies to deliver on the vision and implementation of the Commissioner's strategic plan. Department leaders and employees identify with this vision through a focus on providing a high level of customer service and our organization's first purpose, which is making our community better. The leadership of our Board, the commitment and knowledge of our employee base, and the desire to continuously improve as an organization make us a resilient government, one that is fiscally responsible and dedicated to improving our community and creating a better life for the residents of our county. You have the budget book with you. You will find detailed documentation for your review in the budget book. In addition, this information will be available to the public beginning tomorrow online in the county clerk's office and in the four libraries throughout Cleveland County. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Board, we have been presented with the county, the manager's recommended budget for FY twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year ending twenty-four. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
I have some questions, but I'll take it up with you later when I get, we just got that expenditure book today.
I understand.
So I haven't had time to go over it, so I will do a fix-up of it. Thirty percent increase for EMS ambulance service. That's what it costs more, but in taking over the rescue squad, there's supposed to be a three million dollar gain in services, so that would offset it, so things like that.
That's correct.
I would offset the time.
That's, okay, yes, sir.
Anybody else?
I would just like to thank you for all the work that went into this. You know, you haven't been with us this long, and you had to jump right into the budget to begin with, and I appreciate all the work that you and Kerry and the rest of the staff has done, and many, many hours we can see been put into this.
It was, and I could have never done it without the wonderful staff that's in place right here.
Anybody else? Todd, before you leave, could you speak briefly to the tipping fee? The tipping fee you mentioned twice is going up three percent, but that was, that's in the enterprise fund.
It is.
And that is, that is a plan that was not necessarily just this year, so that's been planned for multiple increases over a long term.
Yes, sir. I believe, yes, sir. I believe it started a couple of years ago, and it runs through 2033, if I'm not mistaken. And it is to support the life site permitting of that, of that landfill. And it's, it's, it supports the way you have to close the different sites at different times and encapsulate them, and that's what the tipping fee increases for.
To monitor in twenty years.
That's right.
And I think I know the answer to this, but the tipping fee includes the construction and demolition plus the landfill? Are those two separate fees?
The construction and demolition of the sites?
No, 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 no. The construction and demolition site is one site.
I think it takes.
I think it is both, but he's talking about.
There's two different sites.
The C and D side, construction debris, debris that goes to the landfill, as compared to household trash.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find that answer out for you and.
I was on the solid waste committee when this came about, and all of both landfills were together. And it estimated when they close them, it took twenty years monitoring. It doesn't make any difference where it's demolition, household garbage, or whatever, that they have to monitor so long. And the fee rate was set up over a period of time to increase to take care of the twenty-year life. And I think about ten million dollars over the life of it, if I'm not mistaken, at the time that were called to monitor it, closed it and monitored over a period of time. I see Kerry shaking her head. Is that about right?
I don't know the amount, but I would, based on now what I've learned, and you're talking about two different sites, I would imagine this, this, this is all one big site in terms of the life site permitting. So it would go toward both of those, I would imagine.
Because one's the lion's, the lion sites, and then construction demolition don't have to go in a lion field. I know you have to, but, but I think, and I'm pretty sure the tipping fees are different for both, but the three percent is for both. So both of them get a three percent increase.
I'll make sure, and we, in two weeks, we can, I can bring that answer back to you for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So Mr. Carpenter's read the required statement by General Statute. We do have to take one action out of the night, which is not to approve the budget, which has to take place after any changes that the Board may make and also after the public hearing. So for everybody watching and those of you. watching and those in the audience, if the board approves this next motion, if, if we get that, so the public hearing would be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's chambers. That'll be the time for public to comment on the count, on the manager's recommended budget. So with that, we do have one action item tonight. I'll ask the board to, we need, we need to approve the posting and holding of a public hearing on the county's manager's budget, recommended budget to be held 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 6, 2023.
Make a motion to approve that, June 6, public hearing, for the. Second.
It'll be on the agenda. That's our reg, that's our next regular meeting. So it'll be, it'll just be an action item on that, it'll be a public hearing on that agenda. So we have a motion to second to post and hold a public hearing for the county, for the recommended budget on June 6, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all of us, if everyone say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. So again, for those of you here, anybody's watching, staff and, and citizens, so the public hearing for the budget will be held on June 6th. As part of the regular, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Commissioners. Next item on the agenda, we have a couple of board members tonight. At this time, I'll recognize the clerk. The first one is the Board of Trustees for Cleveland Community College.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint two people for a four-year term set to expire June 30, 2027.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Craig DeBrew and Larry Hambert Jr.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to reappoint Mr. Craig DeBrew and Larry Hambert. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of us, favor will say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Our last one.
I think we have one more, right? The jury commission?
Yes, sir. You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint one person for a two-year term set to expire June 30, 2025. The names on the list have been vetted and are recommended by Lacy Ainge, our clerk of court for Cleveland County.
I'll make the motion that we nominate Melissa Curtis to the Cleveland County Jury Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second to appoint Ms. Curtis to the Cleveland County Jury Commission. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of us, favor will say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Phil. Next item on the agenda is a closed agenda, posted on the, closed session, which was posted on the agenda. I think Mr. Bridges can take care of that.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions, appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer, or employee, or prospective public office, officer, or employee, and per North Carolina Statute 143-31811A4, to discuss economic development matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by Cleveland County, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the county in negotiations.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us, favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. We're in closed session, so we'll.
We're all back. First of all, entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Our motion's unanimous. Now we're back into open session. During the closed session that we just had on item 11A4, which was the economic development matters, no action was taken. On action 11A6, which was the considered qualification of common performance character fitness conditions of appointment of an employee or individual public official, no action was taken. So we're down to, any commissioners have any comments? Again, Todd, I thank you for, you and staff for all the work that you guys have done to put forward the budget. I'm sure commissioners will have questions as we move forward and we look forward to answering any of those and then the public hearing on June 6th. Does staff have anything? All right, with that, our next meeting of the board will be Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, here in the commissioner chambers. And so with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in this favor say aye. Anybody opposed will say aye.